Good evening. It's the November 10th, 2022, meeting of Longview City Council is now called to order. Before we have our invocation, I would like to welcome and tell how honored we are to have our sheriff, the Honorable Master Soriano, in the audience with us tonight. Please give the sheriff a hand. Thank you for being here, sir. Always feel safe when you're in our presence. We will now have the invocation and the pledge. Tonight, the prayer, pledge, and national anthem, a little different for us, will be led by the Longview High School Choir. The Longview High School Choir is an award-winning group of singers led by Director Melody McMullin. The choir will have the opportunity to perform at Carnegie Hall later this school year, and they are currently raising funds to make the trip to New York. You can visit their Facebook page, Longview Low Bo Choir, to see how you can help. Tonight, they have traveled all the way to City Hall to lead the prayer and pledge as well as the national anthem. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, I pray that you would lead us, guide us, and show us your ways, Lord. I pray that you would be here today, Lord. Let your presence fill this room today, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, what a treat. Thank you, Ms. McMullin, for bringing these young ladies and gentlemen to our midst tonight and enlightening us and giving us such joy. Thank you all, and great luck to you guys and gals. Represent us well. Be safe. Travel well. That was beautiful. We're now at a citizen comment. I do have one speaker card. Mr. Bruce Vactor.
How you doing, man?
Good, sir.
My name is Bruce Vactor. Ahia bahashim yeshaya. That's Hebrew for I am by the way of the Savior. And I was here August 25th.
Mr. Vactor, please give us your address, please, sir. Your address.
I don't have an address at this time.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I came up August 25th, and I brought some stuff to light. And I was, I know I was stuttering, but I was on some medication that they was trying to give me. But I was here to bring some stuff to light, and it came out in the paper September 25th, jail works to fix issue. And I just want to read this. Documents from the commission state, the inspection took place August 29th to 31st, and that one minimum standard was violated. During the review of the medication administration records, Mars, multiple records were found to be missing documentation that medication is administered in accordance with written instructions of a physician. The documents state, multiple days were observed on multiple Mars records to be missing signatures, initials, indicating that medications were administered. I have a problem with that because June 14th, I was arrested by Longview Police Department after being instructed, and I have video of it telling me to come and get my check from Popeyes on Highway 80. And when I arrived there, they took me to jail, forced me to get the COVID test, and I have documents from the orthopedic doctor Rebecca Taylor where my C5, C6, and C7 TI was fractured and messed up. And I have limitation in some of my joints where I can't move like I can to get a job like I used to work. She prescribed me many medications that mess with my mind, my attitude, and many other things. And tremadol, she did not tell me was addicting according to AmericanDictionCenter.org. And on top of that, Mayor, they banned me from the orthopedic doctor after I received these papers that they didn't want me to have. And they called, someone called my mom and told her that I threatened to kill all the doctors, and that's a lie. And I have everything recorded just to show you I'm not lying. And I've tried to make reports about it, but they keep sending the same officers to talk to me that arrested me, and I feel that's a conflict of interest. And I have many other documents that I, I mean, I don't have that much time, but it caused me to have anxiety, panic attacks, high stress levels. My muscles are messed up. I have nerve damage in my ankles where they had me restrained for over three hours in the county jail. Yes, they refused to give me the video and all of that, Mayor. And I was just here to discuss that because I don't have no help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have no more speaker cards. I skipped over community recognition. We'll just move on past that. No, I'm kidding. Community recognition tonight is very, very special. We are going to be recognized along with the Arboretum and Nature Center. Earlier this year, the Arboretum was recognized as a great public space by the American Planning Association Texas Chapter. Great Places in Texas recognizes the Lone Stars, Great Places, Neighborhoods, Streets, and Public Spaces, and celebrates how planning has played a vital role where we live, work, and play. The program promotes and recognizes Great Places while celebrating stories of exemplary planning that have resulted in stronger and healthier communities. The Arboretum is also celebrating its third birthday with a birthday bash this Saturday, November 12th, and mission is free to all, for all to celebrate. You know, the Arboretum has added so much to our community, quality of life, and identity. Longview is identified now by the Arboretum. Revenue, it's a wonderful thing that is in our community that we didn't have before. And that came about by a ton of hard, hard work, sweat, tears, everything, by volunteers, by staff, by the community at large. And, you know, this is an example of a great partnership between the Arboretum and the city where we have come together to form something that is just monumental in our community. And I couldn't be more proud of this accomplishment for those that are here to be recognized tonight and those that have persevered through this, at times, very difficult area for us in the community. But I appreciate what you have done because of your perseverance. And tonight, we have members of the Longview Arboretum Nature Center Board that are here, the Director of Development Services, Michael Shirley, and City Planner Angela Choi. Please, please come forward. Come on up. And this is but just a few of the many, 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 many people that have gone to bat for this project and have persevered through really some difficult times. But, I mean, I couldn't be more proud of you all, city staff. You all have been great. I know at times that was difficult too. But that's part of, that's part of growth and development. But the final product, it couldn't be more beautiful. It couldn't be better than what it is. You all have your vision, and you stand here, and it's been such a champion of this the entire time, all of you all have. But Ann has fought through this entire process, and it's just been so appreciated. And your attitude has always been good, even though it's always hadn't gone your way. And that's what makes you so special, and all of you all. Because I'm telling you, if you haven't been out there, you must go and see this Arboretum. It is a, it is a gem of all of East Texas, not just Longview, all of East Texas. And I couldn't be more proud of these people, our staff, our community for supporting it. So thank you all so much. You all are the best, the greatest. Keep it up. Don't stop now. We got a long way to go, okay? Thank you all so much. Thank you 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 so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you all so much. Come on, let's get this thing. I might have to do two moves.
You should be on that.
Short people.
Not even your front.
Looking for more.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Arboretum.
Arboretum.
One more round of applause. This is a great group of people. Thank you all so much. We are now into, okay, my goodness, public safety update. Chief Boone.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. McPhee. First, I wanted to cover some October stats with you. Our Priority One calls, our average response time was four minutes and 18 seconds, so we're still maintaining our standard of below five minutes. Very proud of that. Calls for service throughout the month of October were 5,277, with just over 2,000 traffic stops during the month. We had 37 DWI cases, and our crashes were 182, which is down 12.92% from October last year. So proud of that number as well. Public customer service survey, we sent out actually 6,963 responses throughout the month and then 1,837 surveys. And our results on that were, again, for the police officers, 4.61, so still staying between that satisfied and very satisfied, and 4.74 for our dispatchers. So again, very proud of those numbers as well. And we had a graduation on October 20th, our 30th Citizens Police Academy. Few members couldn't make graduations, so our class was a little bit bigger than that. But again, very, very proud that we could actually get this going again. It was our first one since COVID, and we hope next year is even bigger. We also were able to go out on October 25th with Mr. Charlie Clayton, World War II veteran, and celebrate his 102nd birthday, so 102 years young. And Chief Stillman was out there with us as well. And it was a great time. Quite a bit of the neighborhood and community came out to celebrate with him, and still had lots of stories to tell and a very, very unique man to meet and visit with. We had some tenures this past month. Detective Larry Pickering has 15 years of service with us. Very proud of him. And Detective Kelly Humphrey with 15 years of service as well. Green Street Bridge. I'm just at a loss for words. I don't really know what to say. I know I worked my first crash there 21 years ago, and it continues to this day. Again, I just advise everybody, if you have a trucking company, and I know sometimes it's out-of-town trucks as well, but please just pay attention to your heights, the little bumble rumble sticks when you hit those, there's a reason for that, so please slow down and evaluate the situation. And Longview Police Department, we are still hiring. So if you're a fall graduate from college and don't know what you're going to do just yet, looking for an opportunity, and you want to help the world and help your community, we would love to have you come onboard. So please come down to us, try out. And again, we have additional steps now thanks to our city council. So thank you. And also, I want to talk about, we do have Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up, and it's going to be the holiday season again. Just to remind everybody to please lock your doors and remove all of your valuables out of your vehicles, so that way you're not a victim of vehicle burglary. And with that, any questions?
Any questions? Chief Boone. Thank you, sir. Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Mr. McPhee, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update since our last council meeting. Back in October, actually back in September, several members of our department from our special operations group, they came and they said, hey, chief, we want to go down to Corpus and compete in what's called the Texas Rescue Competition. I had no idea this ever existed. I've been a spec ops guy most of my career in the fire department, didn't know this was a thing. But they got wind of it, and they said, hey, we're going to pay our own way. We want to go down. We want to see if we can compete with departments from all across the state. And they do this competition. It's kind of unique. They do it onboard the USS Lexington there, docked in Corpus Christi, and it's really focused on a lot of technical, high-angle type rescue style training. And so our guys go down there, they got all the equipment and everything, and they run through a series of scenarios to see, and they're evaluated by a panel of judges to see if they do their things right. You know, that's a big deal. If you don't tie a knot right, you end up in the water, right? Or you end up falling 30 or 40 feet. So it's pretty perilous, and it's important that you know what you're doing. And so our guys went down there representing us, and I'd be dang if I didn't walk away winning second place. The only department in the state that beat them was the Austin Fire Department, and I'm promising we'll be going after them next year. So I just want to give a quick shout out to these guys, these six guys. Captain Steve Dankers, fire driver Brad Conrato, fire driver Steven Winchell, firefighter Hunter King, firefighter Cliff Patrick, and firefighter Drew Pfeifer. They represented the city of Longview and our fire department very well, and I look forward, I look forward to them returning next year and coming back with first place. Our chief Hooton recently had the opportunity to attend the Healthier Texas Summit. And while she was there, she had the opportunity to present to that summit, to that group, about our glow program here in Longview. And it's unique because it's really put Longview on the map. It's one of only, I believe, five programs similar to it in the state of Texas. And so she got to present that of how that collaborative is going to help improve the community health status here in Longview. And by working together, we'll be able to make a lot of great positive changes in the ranks of our community. So we're proud to have her out there representing the fire department and the city and showing what that true concept of teamwork and collaboration, what you can do when you pull all these resources together. And I realize it's still in its infancy, but we're already starting to see where it's making a difference in people's lives here in Longview, and we're proud of that, proud of her for going down and representing us so well. We also participated with the recent tenure breakfast. We had quite a few people that reached certain tenure marks. They're in the picture, in the middle, between the two white shirt bookends. David Thacker with 10 years, Cody Korn with five, Chris Jackson with 10 years. And over the guys that either weren't in the picture or didn't get to make it that day, Scott Smith, 25 years, that's a big tenure mark. Jason Davis with 15, Brian Adcock with 10, Brian Foul, Jacob Parton, Jason Frye, and Brandon Ayers, all with five years. So we're certainly proud of them making those tenure marks. We look forward to many more from them. You've noticed, probably noticed this week, a lot of extra red vehicles running around the community. There's been an arson conference going on. This is an annual activity put on by the East Texas Arson Investigators Association. They host this annual conference where fire investigators from all over the state will come in to get their continuing education hours for those disciplines. So this has been being held out at the Infinity Center. I believe on the next page, I got a map. They had 76 officers from 22 different counties in town with us for the last three days that just ended the day at noon. So we look forward, or we're happy to have hosted that or had it happen here in Longview, and we look forward to them coming back again next year. Our Stop the Bleed training classes are ongoing. Our next opportunity will be next Monday at 6 o'clock. You need any more information on that, you can go to LongviewTexas.gov/STB and get yourself signed up. Our ambulance subscription program is also currently open for new people or for people that would like to renew. Highly encourage you to take advantage of this program and maybe save yourself some out-of-pocket expense should you ever need to use an ambulance here in the city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Stillman? Chief, I want to thank both of you guys, Chief Boone and Chief Stillman, for your preparedness last Friday, for the threat of severe weather that we were threatened with and that we were prepared. Thankfully, we didn't have the severe weather here in our community. Other communities didn't fare as well. But I thank you all both for being so prepared and so up to speed and keeping me informed as you did, and Swept Co. as well. Everybody was on their toes, ready to go, and fortunately, we didn't have to spring into action anymore than we had to. But thank you both for your service and for your preparedness.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I take that point of personal privilege to thank them?
Yes, ma'am. Please.
I would like to take a point of personal privilege to thank the fire department and EMS for saving my sister's life this week. Thank you. The paramedics were very quick in responding.
Thank you. We're now at the discussion item. We'll discuss the parking at Guthrie Creek Park. Mr. Karen.
Good evening, Mayor, council, Mr. McPhee. We've sent out a couple of council FLIs the past two months, one in the beginning in October, one in the beginning of November, about the challenges that we face at Guthrie Park, which in a lot of ways are good, but they do impact our community. So just wanted to kind of give a little bit of an idea of what we are challenged with at the moment within our park system, specifically at Guthrie Park. Guthrie Park is one of our community parks. It's a great, wonderful park that has a lot of amenities, as you can see, and we've added on to those, which has helped contribute to the challenges that we face with parking. So within, I wanted to kind of give you an idea, if you didn't know where Guthrie Park was, but the challenges are specifically in the Tupelo and Metallo area. And as you can see where the P is, that's the parking lot. And essentially, that serves the entire park, and it's a little over 20 acres. There is parking on the other side where it says Rotary Park, so there is parking over there as well, but it's not as quiet as convenient to the most active spots along the trail. So what we have sent out to city council, we want to share with everybody in the community is that we have taken a look at the challenges that we do face out there and what our options are for addressing each of those. And so we took a look at renovating the existing parking lots, adding on a parking lot, on-street parking, whether to do some temporary, short-term alternatives. And basically, what we have determined after looking at all of that is to hire somebody to help us out with a little bit of that. We currently have Stan Tech, who will be doing our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. They're a full-service engineering and consulting firm that actually does our street pavement evaluations. So they have a wide variety of expertise, and what we would like to do is engage them to help us develop a full plan. I would hate to say, all right, let's put in 20 parking spots, and then we really needed 30. Or we put in 30, and then they're like, no, that's too many, or whatever. And so to have somebody determine what the best number of parking spots is, the proper location, as well as, you know, address all of the items as far as safety and access to the available amenities. Again, we understand that pickleball is the biggest driver at the moment. However, the playground out there is very used, as well as the disc golf course. So we want to make sure that if we're going to do something, which has been my mantra since I got here a couple of years ago, is let's take a comprehensive look at it and do it the best way possible. And so I feel it's most appropriate that we have a little bit of help to help us determine that as well as the cost of doing so. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Karen, I hope that you will, you know, encourage them to look carefully at every, you know, right now, pickleball is it. But, you know, times change, and with the completion of the new trail, things are going to get more and more busy on that part of the trail. So look at all those potential future concepts that could arise, because you said we don't want to do something, look back and regret what we didn't or did do right or wrong.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Carver, you had a hand up?
What's the proposed timeframe?
I would imagine they will be able to get back with us in the next three months, and then we can bring that information forward to city council as to what a project could look like as well as the estimated cost.
Have we identified any? I mean, we had 200 people in town for a tournament. I'm sorry, but I don't see that 20 parking spaces is going to alleviate much of that. And you know pickleball's important when it's a subject at church. Okay? So that being said, and Roland, and you're the engineer in the group too, can we get some slag or just something down temporaries to help alleviate before we get somebody hurt over there?
I do have an operational and maintenance concern with doing something like that. We've had that in other areas, and it creates some issues and challenges for us. And so I think we can come up with a project that'll help us out pretty quick here, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Karen? Mr. Pertle?
I was the instigator of this discussion, and I've been over there a couple of times when they've had tournaments. There's anywhere from 70 to 100 people playing pickleball. And they're also playing basketball, especially this time of year out there. And at one of the tournaments, they had a, you know, they had a golf tournament, Frisbee Golf Tournament going too. So I don't believe 20 parking spots is going to be near enough. There's four entities involved in this. We've got the school, we've got the police department that has to do this, we've got the people that are playing the pickleball, and then we've also got the people that live around there. And they've called me numerous times complaining a little bit about not being able to get in or get out. And I know it's a dangerous curve right there. So my question is, what's the time? And you've kind of answered the time with him. The other question is, how are we going to pay for this? Are you estimating about $100,000?
Well, again, I think that's what we're going to have the consultant take a look at, is what the best options are. And again, it may be a phased approach. It may be, again, I think that's what we have their guidance to assist us in developing that plan, and it may be something that we can implement over time. But currently, there are no budgeted dollars for those improvements, so that would be something that we would have to ask city council to provide.
But you are budgeted for the consultant?
Yes, sir.
We won't know the scope of the project until they come back with us, some kind of a recommendation.
Correct. Correct.
Very good. Okay.
Where would you see the potential parking? I'm just looking at the thing. I've been over there three times.
Sure.
If you get into one area, you're going to mess up disc golf. You get into another area, you're...
Right. Exactly. And I think that's, and fortunately, we have some really, really good partners. Again, the disc golf club, as well as pickleball, have been fantastic partners. They provided for our park system in the way of volunteer hours and time and money. So we don't want to disturb what they've done, but also, they know and understand that there are challenges, and I believe they're willing to assist and adjust as well. So again, I think there's some opportunities on the north side there, possibly some pulling out the curb and putting on-street type parking. So again, we want to just take a look at all of it and do the best that we feel is most appropriate, as the mayor mentioned also, that trail use will increase along there. So there's some, there's some different options that I think that we need to take a look at rather than just putting in a parking lot that may not be appropriate, so.
What would be our temporary solution for now? I know that sometimes when I've been out there to play pickleball, people park around the roundabout or face the opposite direction of traffic. So from your point of view, what would be our solution to those people currently going out there right now?
Yeah, it's primarily on-street. I know during the tournaments and large events like that, I mean, we do allow them to park in the grass, and so that's what has happened.
Well, when they've had some of these tournaments, I've also called chief, and they've been a little lax on helping us there, not being so strict on, because they know it's temporary while they're doing it, so.
Okay, good.
That's helped some.
We have a lot of pickleballers in our districts.
These are great problems to have, bumps in the road, but that's part of growth. And that's what we're all about, is growing and servicing our community. And so we'll come up with a solution, and I appreciate your willingness to work with this, Scott, and those of you all that are concerned about this, because it is a concern. But the good thing is, is we have people using our parks, and that's a beautiful thing. So let's keep it up and come back with us when you have something to bring us, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For not to consent to Jenny, anyone like... We're not a consent agenda. Anyone like something pulled out for separate discussion?
D.
Excuse me, sir?
D.
D. Anything else? If not, we will go with item D. Mr. Pertle?
Hey, I just wanted to ask Dwayne about where these, I hope, we're going to. What department?
These are for fire right here, these two.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that will go along with the other ones, what we did last month?
Yeah, those were all PD last time. These are the fire ones, yeah. And these are fully outfitted, completely. You know, we used to bring them in, and we'd do all the outfit in the shop, and they'll be outfitted before they arrive.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion as our second. We have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now to zoning. We will have a public hearing to consider application S-22-09. Ms. Choi?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant and gas station with a drive-through window in General Retail Zoning District. A specific use permit is required for drive-through windows within General Retail Zoning District to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Marbury Avenue is classified as a minor arterial roadway, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway, as long as access management is followed. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yay for development in South Longview. Good, good, good. Okay. Public hearing to help consider application Z-22-21. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone properties situated west of Patio Street, north of Greenleaf Street, from Plan Development 15 to Town Home Zoning District. The applicant previously rezoned approximately 2 and 1/2 acres to the west of this site. He is now acquiring .3 acres to incorporate the rest of this property into his town home subdivision to allow for some larger backyards. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and adjacent uses. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing to consider application Z-22-22. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone a portion of lots 1 through 10 Orem addition, situated at the southwest corner of Yarborough Road and Harley Ridge Road, from Agriculture to Single Family Zoning District. The applicant did rezone most of this property in 2020 to Single Family 4, with Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council approving that request. At the time, an accurate survey was not provided for the rezone request, and so the property was rezoned with assumed property lines. Through the subdivision process, it was discovered that there are some areas within the subdivision that are still zoned agricultural. So the request is for the remainder of this subdivision. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Public hearing is now required, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion does carry. Public hearing, help consider application Z-22-23. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone a portions of lot 1, 2, and 2, 3, and 9, Block 4, Le Gay Gardens, from Office, to General Retail Zoning District located at 1607 Judson Road. This property is the current location of the Family Life Center for Oakland Heights Baptist Church. Places of worship are permitted by right in any zoning district. However, the applicant has stated that they are moving outside the city limits to George Ritchie and would like to market this property to as many potential buyers as possible. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And one more public hearing, application Z-22-25. Ms. Choi?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately five acres from Multi-Family 3 to Single Family 1 zoning district, situated on the north side of Spring Hill Road, west of McCann Road. The applicant would like to build just one, his personal single-family home there. The property was rezoned in 2008 to Multi-Family. However, the current property owner that has just recently purchased it, would, as I stated before, would like to just build his personal home there. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And public hearing is required, which is now open. Any question, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion does carry. Thank you, Ms. Choi.
Want to order, Mr. Mayor? At the P&amp;Z meeting, Oakland Heights had two cases, but only one of them got to us.
Yes, sir. The other one was withdrawn by Oakland Heights Baptist Church.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're now to action item. Items A and B are about the same thing. Chief Stillman has a presentation to cover both before the action is taken on each item in turn. So Chief Stillman, ordinance amending FY 2223 budget, you're up.
Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. McPhee, thanks for the opportunity to visit with you once again. This is the culmination of work that actually began back in March. It's a collaborative effort between the Fire Department, the Police Department, our Information Services Department here in the city, as well as our partners in the county at the Sheriff's Department, to consider the replacement of our existing command platform, which is commonly known as the Command Bus. So I want to take you back to a little trip through history here. Some of you may remember, and when I came to work here at the city in 1990, the Mobile ELC is what we called it, and that was the old bookmobile that was decommissioned from the library, was converted into a mobile emergency operations center that could be taken out to large-scale emergency scenes to give incident commanders a place to collect information and make, you know, good decisions about how they were going to handle that situation. That unit served us from the 80s into the mid 2000s, when it was ultimately replaced by the bus that we have currently. The bus that we have currently was 100% funded with Homeland Security funds. In 2005, the bus is a 2006 model, and unfortunately, as we get further away from the events of 9/11, a lot of that Homeland Security funding has essentially dried up. So as we look forward and think about trying to replace the unit that we have, we realize that we're going to have to figure out how to come up with the funding for this ourselves, between the city and the county. And I know you're aware, we've maintained a great relationship on the front of emergency management, having a partnership with the city and the county. Our philosophy is that if it affects one of us, it's really likely going to affect the other, so why don't we just come together instead of working and opposing one another, to join forces, to see through whatever that thing may be. The storms the other night, as we lean forward on Friday night, we're all paying attention to the same thing, because ultimately, we're all going to be affected by it. And the fact that Gregg County's so small and Longview takes up such a big portion of it, what's good for one is typically good for the other. And if you're not familiar with this unit, we use it on large-scale events or specialty-type events, where it goes out and serves as a forward base of operation that allows, again, those incident commanders, incident managers, and leaders to come together, to have the technology and the communications equipment that they need, not only to communicate with the resources here in the city, but outside of the city on a large-scale event, if it's communicating with the State Operations Center in Austin, whatever that may be, as well as having the technology onboard to help us pay attention to things like real-time, like the weather injects from the National Weather Service, or the message boards that are coming out out of the State Operations Center for something that's affecting the whole state like a hurricane. So just, those are the important facets of it, or the technology and the communications features of it, that it can integrate in with the Emergency Operations Center, or it can go way downrange and operate independently and provide that same level of resource for the people that are using it to successfully get to the end of an incident. And you know, here locally, we use it quite a bit for severe weather incidents. You've seen it set up after tornadoes, flood events, the ice storms, anything that are generally impactful to the entire city. Law enforcement regularly uses it on standoffs, hostage events, you know, extensive shooting events, things like that, hazardous materials events, fires, you get the picture. It's the big-scale stuff. It's not the everyday, run-of-the-mill things that we're accustomed to dealing with. We're there for two hours, and we're picking up, going back home. These are the things that are going to last four, six hours, one, two, three days sometimes. The unit we're proposing is built on a freightliner chassis. It's got more than enough power to load this thing down and put all the equipment and the people that we need in it to support it for those long-duration events. The unit we're proposing will accommodate up to 16 people working inside of it, where our current one will really hold about eight comfortably, versus the bookmobile back with it would only hold about six. It will come with up-to-date technology, which that's really the struggle. That's the thing that's really been the biggest challenge for us, is, as you know how technology changes pretty frequently, and to keep this bus up to the front edge of that technology, so that we can maintain those communication connections with everyone, the technology has to be replaced on it in a timely manner. The current bus that we use, that's been one of the Achilles' heels of it, is it really was not built with that in mind. The technology that it came with in 2006 was pretty well factored in to be the only technology it was ever going to have. Now, we've had to force some square pegs into some round holes to change and keep up with technology a couple of times already, but our Information Services technicians that have to maintain and work on that have told us that it is cumbersome, and it's pretty much served its useful life the way technology, things are changing. Just something simple like getting a cable from the front to the back, or from one side to the other, is almost impossible in the unit that we have now. The unit that we're proposing has raceways and chaseways built into the superstructure of it, so that for the next 30 years, as technology will change multiple times, those connections will be more easily accommodated, because it's actually engineered and architecturally designed into the unit. The generator is another weak spot in the current bus that we have. Not just the fact that it's a little bit undersized and underpowered, but the way that it's designed into this bus, we have issues with it where you'll be in the middle of an operation and the generator will just die and you lose power. And it's got to do with the airflow and the way it vapor locks, where it emits the exhaust, and so forth and so on. It's just really problematic. It always has been, and there's not really a great fix for it. We've learned to live with it, but we've done without it a lot and had to work in the dark a few times. It serves, it can be locally, the unit we're proposing can be locally serviced. There's a facility out at the airport that's been in the county for a couple of years now. It's actually the same manufacturer that works on all of our frontline and reserve fire engines. They're the same people that work on these types of units, so that we don't have to send, the bus we have now is made in Ohio. If it breaks down or has a severe catastrophic failure, we've got to send it to Ohio to get it fixed. Nobody around here will touch it, because it's such a specialized piece of equipment. Like I said earlier, the service life for this unit we're proposing will be about 25 to 30 years. I really feel comfortable about that number. You've seen with the history that we have, we typically get, you know, somewhere around that 20-year mark with these. I think we'll be able to stretch this one out a little bit more. The estimated build time on this, which is why we're coming to you now, is 20 to 22 months. So we're going to continue to limp the current one that we have along for the next two years, hopefully, while this unit is being built, before we can put it into service. And the big number there, the $1.5 million, the county actually took action at their last Commissioner's Court meeting back at the end of October, and they ponied up their half of the money, and that's what we're here for you tonight, to see if the city has the same interest of helping us get our current unit replaced. And with that, oh, well, here's a floor plan of it. When it's folded out, the current unit we have only has one slide-out unit in it. The unit we're proposing has four, which is why it will certainly accommodate more people working inside of it, helping us get the job done. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any question, Chief Stillman? Then, is there a motion to consider the ordinance on the budget? We have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to consider resolution, Director City Manager, to execute the documents?
So, brother.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Thank you, Chief Stillman.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Sheriff Sariano. Thank you, Chief Moon. Items C and D are also about the same thing, so Councilman Ishihara will have a presentation to cover both before action is taken on each item in turn. Ms. Ishihara?
Thank you. I do have a slideshow that hopefully we can pull up, or a couple of slides. It's not long. There we go. Thank you. Thank you. Our Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee met back on October 27th, and just as a short refresh for council members that may not remember, the CPAC Advisory Committee was formed after the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan. At the time, each council member selected two members from their district to serve on that committee. That committee met pretty regularly, and then, following the bond election in 18, we met only about annually, I would say, kind of to refresh and keep people up to date. But at that time, then, each council member just selected one representative on that CPAC committee. We met on October 27th, and it is a recommendation unanimously from the committee that I bring back to you, that we move forward with the refresh of the Comprehensive Plan that was previously considered. Just as some other reminders, our Comprehensive Plan that was adopted previously began in the fall of 2013. It was approved by council in March of 2015, and the initial contract was 225. If you would move to the next slide, please. I did want to illustrate, just, I know that there are concerns about the amount of money that is spent on consultants, and specifically for this one, the $94,000 that we're asking for a budget amendment to approve. So I asked staff to put together the dollars that had been brought into our community as a result of the Comprehensive Plan that we adopted in 2015. As you can see, that's over $14 million, including a million for the Arts Cultural District downtown, the trail grants, the tech stock grant for the Marbury Complete Street, the green, and the arboretum. So it is not insignificant dollars that we're talking about. All of these funding sources rely upon us to have that guiding document, that one thing that can show them that our community is behind it, and that we're serious about that strategic plan. So hopefully, that will help illustrate the importance of having that planning. It's not on a slide, but I did also want to note that that document led the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee to recommend back to council in 18, that we move forward with a bond election that was put out to voters for $104 million that was passed by a significant margin. So I think what you see there is that the plan captured what the public wanted, and that was supported through the bond election that was put to the voters, and they resoundingly approved it. Okay, sorry, Richard, I'm ready for the next one. Why do we need a refresh? Well, the Comprehensive Plan, which is a very lengthy document, at the end summarizes the top priorities, and there were 27 of those, and we've completed 25. So that's fantastic. I want to pat us on the back for keeping that document at the forefront, getting those things done. I think that has helped Longview be where we are now. We've made incredible strides, and I'm so, so proud of us as a community, but it's time to ask the citizens, what is next, right? We need the next 27, or whatever that checklist is, but it's time to get that list together so that we can be planning to move forward. The planning takes time, putting those things in place takes time, getting funding sources takes time, so now is the time that we need to move forward with that. Next is, well, we met on the 27th. We've unanimously asked council to please move forward with this budget amendment and the refresh at this time. The cost for the update is $94,200 with our previous contractor, which is Fries and Nichols. Go to the next one. And what does that include? That's three meetings with the CPAC committee, which it's for council to decide, but I would envision the CPAC committee kind of overseeing this process and being in charge of how the consultants are directed, two public meetings to gather community feedback, a draft of the plan, and then development of the implementation. So what I would hope would come back to council is a similar checklist of items that would be our job, to take the citizens' input and then put that into place. I really think that of the role that we play up here, having an up-to-date Comprehensive Plan is in the top five things that I can think of that is our job. So I'm back here today, asking for that approval.
Any question or discussions on this item?
And I did, I'm sorry, we do have some CPAC members here today, and I did want to thank you and recognize you for being here. Thank you.
The previous two times that it came to the council, once we tabled and once we went back on, I remember specifically asking staff if they were going to rebid this. I find that $94,000 in the grand scheme of our overall budget is not that, but did they ask Fries and Nichols to look at their number?
Oh, like renegotiate it?
Yes.
I don't know.
And I'll tell you, the answer is no, because I called them.
Mm-hmm.
I'll come back to this, and I'm not against the plan, but let me look at it from another side. And I think it sets a dangerous precedent for this council, because if the council makes a decision, and then, for whatever reason, the action comes back up, and parts and pieces of this thing have not been dealt with, then I think that's a kind of a, not necessarily way. Understand that's what the Comprehensive Plan did. You know, you alluded to yourself that we had completed 25 of 27. The second thing I'd ask you, beyond the money, the last time we spent, well, in fact, with... The second thing I'd ask you beyond the money, the last time we spent, well, in fact with that one consulting company, we spent over a half a million dollars between the Comprehensive Plan and the UDC, okay? The last time they came back and prior to my time on council, they brought back a plan and I actually made a bunch of the meetings and was really interested in the plan. The thing that I've always had problems with it, Mayor, is that when they ask the questions of our citizens, there was never a dollar value attached to it. Case in point, do you like sidewalks? Well, there's not a seven of us up here that don't like sidewalks, but the question would have been asked, do you like sidewalks if the house price is going to go up 5,000 bucks? It wouldn't be seven, okay? And so whatever we do when this bus comes back, we can ask the citizens anything we want to do, but at the end of the day, they've got to pay for it, okay? The last time they came to town, we spent the money, plan's good, I'm not down in the bond issue. But if they come back this time, I'm just telling you that I don't think we can float another bond at this time in the history and the debt of our city. And so I've toyed with it back and forth. Yes, I think we need to do it. I don't know that the timeframe, as we're completing the first bond, we still got several major projects left out there. I just don't see that we can take on any additional debt and I think that we're with the original plan and what we've got, I think we've got something to work with. And that's just my thoughts on it. I mean, I'm not naysaying it, I'm just saying, hey, there's a couple of pieces of this thing that are a concern and as I've shared with you before, I'm concerned about our total indebtedness and I'm assured that it's not that outlying for a city of our size and so I'm good with that, but I just don't think we need to even set ourselves up for two councils down the road for being able to have to come back to the citizens for another bond.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah, so this committee that gets together, if I'm not mistaken, is doing projections, correct? Like 25 years, 30 years down the road, correct?
Yes.
So all the research and everything we're doing now is looking at how life will be here in Longview 25 years from now, correct?
Yes.
And so when we pass this past bond, that group got together, I'm assuming, 15, 20 years ago, correct? And 10 years.
15, yeah.
15.
Eightish.
Yeah? Okay. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to understand how that projection would look.
Yeah. I did want to address, if I could, we talked at the CPAC meeting, there is no intention or guidance that this would result in a bond. This would simply allow us to go out for grants and put it on a wish list because there are some things that are being paid for in other funding sources that are not a bond. So I do think it is important that we still have that list so it makes us available, shovel-ready, if you will, for those projects that can fall into our lap if we're ready to receive them. But I do want to be clear, we said that specifically at the CPAC meeting, there is no intention of rolling this into a bond in the future. That is not the point.
I believe what's helped our city, I was one of the people actually that tabled it last time, but I've really been doing my homework since the last meeting and I think that some things have to keep in mind is that our competition is not Tyler. Our competition is Plano, Frisco and McKinney. And in order for us to continue to plan for the future, I think that we have to have a document in place that reflects the values of today's time. I'm very conservative, as a lot of people know, in regards to spending money, but I think sometimes you have to spend money to make money and I think this is one of those scenarios where we need our tax base to grow. We need our tax base to grow, we need new citizens to move into our city. I know that our average age range has gone down to 35, which is great, and so my hope is that more people will move back here after they go off to college and come back to our city to bring back some of those degrees. I know that the state of Texas has an average of 26 percent, oh, this was according to the plan then, so I don't know what it is now, which is why I think it's important to refresh it. But in East Texas, we're falling behind by 6 percent. We only have 20 percent of people with at least a bachelor's degree and I think that we should have a plan that plans for the future so that we can continue to have the blue collar workers here, but as well as bringing some more white collar jobs to East Texas to diversify our workforce. I don't know, I don't want to put words in organizations' mouths, but I know that Leadco has been supportive in the past, so I don't know if it would be a good idea to maybe ask them if they would be willing to put part of their budget towards that. That's all I have to say.
When I look at this opportunity that the city always has before them, we have to look, you know, our job is to look not today, to look at the future. And in the future, when you look at what developers look at, private developers, not just private developers within the city of Longview, which there are, but private developers outside the city of Longview, you know, they look at our wish list too, to determine if they want to spend their time to come and develop within our community depending on what our wish lists are. And I think that has been a huge advantage for us when it came to landing certain companies like The Gap and Dollar General. And one of the things that was the key factor in that were our trail systems and that came from this Comprehensive Plan and the grants that came through that, that did not come from the bond package. And so I think it's ultimately important that we, as a council, look to what we will saddle the next group with, or the next group after that, or the next group after that, or however far it may be, with what is important to our citizens because we're the voice of that. The citizens don't have an individual voice where they can speak out like we can from this platform and when they collaborate and get together and form a group that speaks for the community, that's exactly what it does, it speaks for the community, but that lets everyone around us know where we are willing to put our money. And if those of you don't think that, and I'm not saying any of us don't, because we all supported the bond election, if you don't think that didn't resonate with companies around us saying if we're willing to put our own money in our community, they're willing to put their money in our community as well, then you're mistaken because it has a huge factor in that. And I know Leadco is definitely in favor of this proposal because it's important to them. They need a foothold to be able to go out and bring the primary jobs into the community that is their job to do. And so I think we have to look forward and say, you know, we need a roadmap. Whether we can, we will never be able to do it all, just like we couldn't do the first 27 all at one time. It took eight years to do 27. So this will be an ongoing process, but if you don't have a roadmap, you're flying blind and the city should never fly blind, in my opinion. So I think we need to be very cautious in how we look at this and not get blinded by a dollar figure. The dollar figure's important. Every tax dollar we spend is important and we're responsible for, but when you spend it wisely, you get wise returns. So we need to be very careful with that.
Can I ask one question of either Mr. Shirley or Ms. Laura Hill? Michael Shirley, probably. I know that in part of me doing my homework, I wanted him to look into if there were some grants we could allocate to this. I don't know if you were successful in finding any.
Yeah, one of the grants that Laura and her group has identified as a grant from Texas General Land Office and zoning ordinances and land use plans, comprehensive plans are eligible, so we will be going through that process to see if this update would be an eligible recipient of that. I can't make any promises, but we're definitely going to pursue it.
Hypothetically, how much money is offered from that grant?
So each applicant would have a maximum of $300,000 and there's, it was a $100 million community development block grant that was allocated to the state of Texas for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shirley.
Any other question or discussion on this?
I'm going to approve action item C.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second for action item C, amending the budget by $94,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a resolution authorized City Manager to designate, negotiate the contract with the Fries and Nichols. Is there a motion?
It's approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Renata, as a community interest, we'll start with you, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the distinct privilege and honor of being out with the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center at the Halloween contest plan and I was truly amazed at our, not only at our facility, which I had seen before, but at the number of talented people that we have in our city. The top right picture is Dorothy and if you look real close, you can see Toto in the basket. Bottom left is Best of Show and that was Correla DeVille. And the three judges are in the middle and I can't see the others because I can't see from here, but just a great community interest, several hundred people out there. And I brought each of you a present from the shelter.
Tim, how come you aren't dressed up in this photo at the Halloween carnival?
I was, I got my counsel shirt.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We just had a really good time out with the staff that day. That's a world-class facility and I think most of you need to have a basic. Jackie Neuhauser is a family friend and I couldn't hardly deny her when she called and asked if I would judge, so great move there. Next, another distinct privilege, the mayor just happens to be tied up and Brittany calls and says, hey, can you make the proclamation to the Girl Scouts? And I said, well, I'm an Eagle Scout, but I guess I can handle it. So we presented a proclamation on behalf of the city. These two young ladies were awarded the Silver Award, Andrea Perez and Galen Dark. And I thought it was a really nice proclamation, real nice ceremony, but the rest of the story, these two young ladies took an entire classroom at Community Connections over on Pine Tree Road and remodeled it for a CASA safe house. And that's a safe house where supervised parents and children can relax and work. And they just did a, Mayor, just a splendid job. It was so cute and they had toys and murals and these girls just, they worked their tail off and that was a really good, that's two good pieces of the job. Next up, we have a food drive. We got Friday, November 11th at the Fairgrounds, 10 o'clock to 11:30. And then Gregton's back up again next Thursday from 10 to 12 at 1101 Pine Tree Road. Items of community interest, the Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. In talking with Jackie and the staff over there, there was some discussion on their website about things that the shelter needed and I was able to secure a grant from McCoy's and we took them a truckload of supplies and things and the little girls at the shelter just cried. They were so happy to have soap and hand sanitizer and all of those things and so we were just really pleased to make that denotion. And that was number two. Chief Stillman was first. We got three more to go, so we got that done and that was good. Special Olympics are in town today and tomorrow. There's about 200 athletes, 13 delegations in town at Pine Tree for the Special Olympics. If you get some time tomorrow, you might check into that. I don't know when the rain's supposed to get here, but maybe it'll stay out till there... The kids are ranging, excuse me, let me correct myself, the athletes are ranging from 8 to 50 in the Special Olympics over there. And Pine Tree's going to hold a Community Christmas Moving Night on Friday night, December the 9th at the stadium, big screen. The Santa Claus will start at 6:30. Superintendent's going to be cooking hot dogs, popcorn and hot chocolate. Community is invited to attend and it'll be a no-charge event. And if that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Snotty.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Wade.
Yes. This beautiful piece of artwork here on your screen is the new Broughton Recreation Center and man, it looks incredibly nice and I would like to let everyone know that it is open for gym memberships. Mr. Karen told me that there are even guys in there playing ball today, which I'm excited about. And I'd like to send a thanks out to our citizens who, you know, all voted. You know, we talk about what we were discussing earlier tonight. This is an example of that development and moving our community forward. So please give it a chance. I think this facility is not just for South Longview or District 3. I think this is something the entire city can be proud of and the entire city should get there and really experience it. So to everyone involved in this, to the citizens who voted for this, everyone in District 3 and Parks and Recreation Department, thank you very much and please get out and visit our new Broughton Recreation Center. Next, that's the Community Center on Green Street. That's last year where we held our annual Thanksgiving dinner and we plan to hold that again this year at the same facility. This year volunteers will be really, really important because we're going to have to transport the food in and so we're requesting anyone that has experience in handling food or working in and around food to please reach out to me here at the city to volunteer. But, you know, this event every year, it's always amazing when someone and several people come up and say, you know, I didn't have a place to be this year for Thanksgiving and because of this dinner, you know, I had a place to come and sit and fellowship and have Thanksgiving dinner. So this will happen again this year. Thank you to everyone that makes this possible. We look forward to having Thanksgiving dinner again with you.
I'd add something to that.
Sure.
Ray is paying volunteers, so anyone that...
Paid volunteers.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty.
I think that's like a...
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Ms. Ishihara.
Nothing for me.
Ms. Cambola.
I have a couple of things. First of all, go Panthers. Spring Hill High School volleyball sports a record of 33 to 8, including the district, by district and area championships. They move on to the regional tournament in Bryan, whoop, where they will face Lago Vista on Friday, November 11th. Congratulations Panthers, y'all are doing a great job. And items of community interest, today there was the poverty simulation. So if you would like to help with this, please email Ms. Holly Fuller at hfuller@longviewtexas.gov. There are plenty of roles you can play. I was social services today, I was a baby last time and I was the robber the last time, which was actually the funnest part to play. Sorry, Chiefs and police, but if you would like to help be part of this great program, please hit up Partners in Prevention. Thank you.
Mr. Purtle.
I want to thank Dwayne. They opened up Fairmont today both ways.
Mr. McPhee.
Yes, Ashley, it's my pleasure to talk about employees that have been here with, for a number of years and I wanted to start with the one that everyone just oozes and ozzes about. Laura Hill with 35 years plus 10 years of part-time service. We're so glad to still have her around and hope she stays around as long as she wants to. So the other people that we were able to recognize were obviously Ms. Teresa Venters, which is 25 years of service, which is no small feat. Michael Shirley has been here 20 years. Selena Taber has been here 20 years in charge of the water purification. Sailor Knox, 10 years at the Animal Care and Adoption Center. Then we have Bea Lopez with 10 years, Brandon Button with five years, Lindsay Pharo with five years, Delmario Hawkins with five years, Marcus Maxi with five years, Christopher Shirley with five years. And then there's an overall picture that shows everyone, there's a couple, there's 130 in there that I hadn't talked to Terry about why he didn't come, but anyway, another monumental accomplishment, so it's my pleasure to welcome those people and say, thanks for your many years of service.
Thank you. I say it all the time, we have the best city employees in all of Texas and it doesn't stop just with the police and fire, it's all the way down the line. Offices are closed November 24th, 25th for Thanksgiving holiday due to Thanksgiving. Thursday's trash and recycle will be collected on Friday, November the 25th. Council meetings, speaking of Thanksgiving, I'm guessing y'all don't want to have a city council meeting on Thursday night, Thanksgiving, right? So our last meeting of the year will be held Thursday, December the 8th. Holiday events, if you're on holiday spirit, there are a couple of great community events this month. We'll have our Community Christmas tree lighting on Saturday, November the 19th from 4 to 7. Then we'll celebrate the Piney Woods Christmas with the Animal Annual Christmas Parade at 6:30 on Thursday, December the 1st. Wow, I noticed that soon. I got to get ready for that one. Okay, so...
Okay, so with that, that concludes our meeting. Thank you all for being here, for your participation, and until we see you again, God bless. We're adjourned.